And we're going to talk about infrastructure, the utility bill overview, and then customer service related to utility bills. I wanted to note for all of us here tonight that you'll catch me referring to the water and sewer bills as utility bills. That's because the lingo has changed. Water and sewer bills are now utility bills because they encompass more than just water and sewer. Next slide, please. Okay, so did we skip to infrastructure? Okay. We're going to talk about infrastructure needs. So I think it's important, I'm going to turn this over to Assistant City Manager Kevin Yi. We didn't skip slides there, did we? Courtney?
No, I don't think so.
No, okay. So I guess we're going to go right to Assistant City Manager Kevin Yi to talk about infrastructure. And before Kevin goes, I'll just note that Kevin is also our city engineer and our Director of the Department of Public Works. He has been for many years, has a very firm handle on some of our infrastructure needs. Kevin, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager. I appreciate that. So as part of our infrastructure needs, we do a very thorough job of maintaining our infrastructure. For our sewer system, for instance, we clean and televise that every four years. Every piece of sewer in the city gets televised and cleaned every four years. So we know what the condition is. With our water mains, we keep track of any issues we have with our water mains. We maintain and flush our lines and maintain our hydrants. So we feel like we had a pretty good handle on them. But we did have an infrastructure condition assessment done. And what we found was pretty eye-opening. Some of the facts and information are here on the screen. Seventy percent of our water mains in Oak Park are considered either significant, have significant deterioration, or are unserviceable. What that amounts to is we have 102 miles of water main and 72 miles are in need of repair. That's a lot. I mean, that's pretty eye-opening and really can be overwhelming. Similar on the side of sewer lines. Sixty percent are considered either failure likely in the foreseeable future or marginally functional with failure imminent. Again, eye-opening. Now, you know, again, I feel like we do a good job. And I will go through and just say of the 113 miles of sewer, like 68% or 68 miles are needed to repair. Now, we annually go through and clean and televise our sewers. We replace water main every year on Oak Park Boulevard. We did almost a mile of water main this year. But the prices of these infrastructure projects are significantly going up. It was over a million dollars to do nearly a mile of water main on Oak Park Boulevard. To do sewer, we can do a lot more sewer for less because what we do in most cases is we try to line the sewer. Instead of open cutting and having to replace all the street and everything else that's associated with it, you can stick a resin pipe in the sewer line and you literally bake it with boiling water. It becomes a structural pipe and, you know, we're done. So it's a long-lasting, long-term solution to aging sewer pipes. But if you really count the amount of money it would cost to bring all of our sewers and water mains above, you know, these levels here, I mean, it's pretty overwhelming and pretty daunting. You know, we keep good track of it and we don't feel like there's any danger to the public regarding infrastructure. But there are a lot of potential issues that we, you know, want to make the public aware of. Next slide, please. So what we, this is what we're doing in this upcoming fiscal year, the 21-22 fiscal year. We're doing $600,000 worth of sewer lining and repairs, $300,000 worth of sewer cleaning and televising. And in our water distribution system, we're doing $3.1 million in water distribution projects. In future years from '21 through '27, that's part of our five-year capital plan. We're spending, investing about $4.1 million in sewer repairs and $13.8 million in water distribution system repairs. So we're spending money, we're investing in the system. And that's all part of the utility bill that we're going to be talking about today. And that's how we fund it. Next slide, please. So the risks of deferred maintenance. There, you know, obviously are risks when you don't maintain your infrastructure. Currently in Oak Park, we have about 25 to 30 water main breaks a year. Again, our crews are great. They come in the middle of the night or typically in the freezing cold weather. They're fixing and repairing these water mains and, you know, making sure that, you know, everyone in Oak Park has adequate water and maintains the system. But with that, it costs extra manpower. You know, usually it's done on, it either leads into or it's done on overtime or the middle of the night or whatever. So, you know, it's extra manpower and there's water loss. So whenever water runs out of, you know, just like it would if you had a water leak from a water main break, you know, it's watered down the drain. So we don't like to have them. We like to try to prevent them anyway, you know, as much as we can. But inevitably, when you have a system that's, you know, an older system such as ours, you're going to have some. Sewer backup. So if we don't maintain the sewer system, there's always potential for sewer backups. Now, I'm proud to say that in my time in Oak Park, you know, we have only had, I believe, one backup when I first started that was due to a problem with the system, a failure of the system. And since then, we have cleaned and televised regularly like I talked about. And we don't have sewer backups from infrastructure problems that, you know, since I've been here. You know, my number one goal and the thing that keeps me up at night is, you know, making sure we don't have problems that are caused by our infrastructure, our negligence not to maintain it. So I think we do a good job of that and it is our priority. Low water pressure. If you have watering breaks, you know, you're going to have low water pressure because the water is gushing out of a hole or a leak and, you know, it's going to lower the pressure in the system. So we don't want to have that. Health and safety hazards. Whenever you open up water to the atmosphere, there's potential for contamination. Again, I think our crew does a good job. They understand the importance of maintaining our health and safety standards, do a good job of sanitizing everything and putting everything back together while maintaining positive pressure and all the things that we're supposed to do. But whenever you open up, you know, a system to the atmosphere, there's always a potential for an issue. Next slide, please. So I'm going to show what happens when there is a water main issue or a water main or a sewer issue. In Southfield, 2016, on your slide to your left. So this is a major sinkhole that happened. Really, it happened because of a combination of a water main break that found a weak spot in the sewer. Basically put a hole right in the sewer in the manhole and it washed all of the material, all the dirt away. They found this because they were getting low water pressure in this area and they couldn't figure out why. And they started popping covers and looking for water main breaks and things like that. And they found this. Fortunately, you know, no vehicles fell into this gigantic hole. You know, this could obviously be deadly if something had fallen into a hole like this. Fortunately, they found it before that happened. But this road, this section of road was closed for like two years while they repaired this. It was a significant repair and I can't remember the dollar amount exactly, but it was something like an $8 million cost because of this issue. On the right, Bloomfield Hills had a sinkhole in 2018. Again, collapsed the road. Again, fortunately, no one was injured. But you can see how something like this, if a, you know, a garbage truck or a school bus or something heavy drove over this, you know, the undermined road might not be able to maintain that. So, you know, these are things that can happen. And when you say, you know, well, it happened to us. Here's a sewer that we found on Morton Street just last year that fortunately we found as part of our cleaning and televising program, which is why we do it. But you can see, if you look into there, the pile of dirt, it's all dirt on the bottom of the pipe. And you can see the missing section of pipe above it. So had we not found this and it was let go for, you know, years or, you know, who knows, even one or two years, that could have washed in all that dirt undermining the road above it and causing a sinkhole. So, you know, it does happen. We have caught a few of them in my time here. And, you know, we are fortunate enough to have caught them and repaired them before they caused any issues. Next slide, please. Okay, we are now on the utility bill overview. I believe that Kevin Vandywall is going to take this one.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Kevin. Kevin Vandywall, I'm going to turn it over to you in just one moment. Before I do, I just wanted to mention Kevin had talked about something very important, which is our system is not, you know, doom and doom on the edge of impending collapse. But one of the reasons that, you know, we wanted to show you the needs assessment was that we wanted our residents to understand the incredible infrastructural responsibility that we have. And so when we charge for water and sewer bills, you know, that's how we generate revenue to offset some of these infrastructural costs maintenance and upkeep. So having said that, I do want to turn it over to Kevin Vandywall, our water supervisor, to give a brief overview of our utility bill.
Thank you, City Manager and Assistant City Manager. Little overview on the utility bill. As discussed earlier, we went, we rebranded our water bill to now what we call a utility bill because we bill for multiple items on the bill. So utilities refers to water, sewer, stormwater runoff, meter service charge, and rubbish collection. So we have our first monthly bill that went out in August. That billing period covered June 16th through July 15th. So those have been out and mailed. We did have a printing error on the zip code. We did recognize that and acted quickly and sent out postcards notifying the residents of that change. As far as payments go, all mailed payments must be sent to 14,000 Oak Park Boulevard. Also, please, when sending your payments in, include your account number posted on your check. We're also proud to announce that there have been no utility bill rate increases for this fiscal year, '21, '22. And also, we're very proud.
Kevin?
Yes?
Can you please say that again?
Ah, yes. No utility bill rate increases from the city for fiscal, from the city for fiscal year '21, '22. So.
And I'd like to add, if I could, that that includes the solid waste charge was not increased either. So again, what did you say?
No rate increase.
There we go.
Another big introduction that's coming out in October, the bills have been mailed out. The big change on our minimum bill. So we went from a two-unit down to a one-unit. So that's going to reflect usage after the August bill. So it's going to be August 16th through September 15th for that usage. So those of you who are a minimum user in the system, you no longer will be billed a minimum of two units, but a minimum of one unit. So what does that look like? So pretty much for two units, you're looking at 902 for water. For two units, you are looking at 972 for sewer. So those are now going to be billed out in one unit. So that is going to change your minimum bill going from 6232 down to 5295. So this is our new monthly utility bill format. This would be an average utility bill. These are things that we bill for and how their rates got where they are. We do have the cost of water from Great Lakes Water Authority where we purchased the water from. We have the cost of sewer treatment from Oakland County. We also have our solid waste charge, our administrative fees, infrastructure fees. We also have our fixed stormwater fee. And we also have the court order debt service coon drain fee. These are all what make up a utility bill, as you can see on the screen here. So you have your water, sewer, meter charge, rubbish, rubbish collection charge, stormwater runoff charge. So your rubbish collection charge would be a fixed rate. Everyone's going to be paying 1291 monthly.
Kevin?
Yes?
Can I interrupt you again? I'm sorry. I was hoping you could elaborate a little bit more on the rubbish collection charge. I know over the last couple of weeks, we've had a lot of questions about this. And I believe there was a couple of comments on social media even saying that we are double charging our customers. But I was hoping you could explain that a little bit more for us.
So we are not double charging. So we charge, a charge for solid waste on our tax, which is around 1.6 million. And what we've had budgeted for is 3 million. That difference does have to be made up. And so how we bill that out is on our utility bill. So instead of increasing the costs for the taxes, that additional cost is made up on our utility bill, which is the fixed rubbish collection charge of the 1291 that everyone pays throughout the city.
Thank you.
We also have the storm runoff charge. That's a, that's an average charge for stormwater runoff or a monthly charge that is variable based on property size and square foot. And next slide, please. So current payment options you see here on the screen, there's six payment options to pay your utility bill. We have ACH, which is Automatic Bank Draft. So you can set that up through us. You know, just fill out the form that we have here in the office or online and just let your bill take care of itself on a due date. We also have a drop box outside City Hall. We please ask no cash, check, or money order. That's available 24/7. We also have in-person payments, which we accept credit cards, check, money order, and of course, cash. Also mail, you can mail your check or money order into us. We also ask that your account number is included on that check so we can ensure accurate processing. We have online credit card payments. You can go on our website. There is a pay utility bills online link that takes you right to your account so you can make an easy transaction on your account. Just note, there is a third-party credit card fee. That would be $2.95 per transaction to make the utility bill payment. And our last option would be over the phone, which is through our 1-800 number. Now, if you forget the number or online, just please go to our website. We do have this information ready available. Next slide, please. So our utility bill assistance programs, we do have multiple of them on hand. These are just a few of them laid here. I know financially, there's some struggle as far as, you know, with the utility bills. So we're very proud to have all these on hand and ready to hand out at the counter. We do have them on our website. So there's a downloadable form so you can print those out. We are seeing money come in and we're seeing a lot of residents being helped, you know, with their utility bill. Not only your utility bill, but your rent or mortgage. So it helps you out in those areas as well. Next slide, please. So what we're looking at here is a picture overall, our neighboring communities as far as our rates and infrastructure. It just shows a comparison model between our surrounding cities, what our estimate bill looks like, what place we fall in. We fall in the seventh place, as you can see on the list here. So for an average 30-unit bill, this was per quarter, of course. We bill monthly now. But just so you get the idea, as far as the dollar amounts and what we're spending in our five-year infrastructure plan. You know, goes through and just shows different cities and dollar amounts of what they're allocating for their infrastructures. Next slide.
Okay. I think we're going back to Assistant City Manager Yi on this, if I'm not mistaken. Kevin Vandywall, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stick around for questions at the end. Assistant City Manager Yi, if you would take the stormwater one, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So this is a, you know, obviously a new way of billing that we have just implemented. And it was implemented due to a court ordered separation of our stormwater fee. And, you know, we had, we had no choice. So we had to go through and do a study on how we would build the stormwater fee. So what this basically is, and I know I've heard different things about people charging, you're charging for rain or you're doing this or doing that. But the reality is, is that City of Oak Park is in what's called the combined sewer system. And that means that the stormwater that falls in the street or on properties or wherever goes into the same sewer system as a sanitary sewer, flushing the toilet, the laundry, bathtub, that sort of thing. And it all goes together and it goes off to be treated. So we, what we had to do is we had, instead of saying that there's just one sewer fee, we had to charge, because the court determined that was more fair, I guess, that we charged stormwater based on the size of the property that you own, that the stormwater would be coming from. And not just the size of the property, but also what's called pervious and impervious surfaces. So what that means is, for instance, if you have a lot that's fully paved, the water from that lot is going to come off of that lot into the system at 90%, or nearly 100%. So it's, most of that water is going to end up in the sewer system. If you had a lot of all grass and trees and shrubs and, you know, a lot of that water would be absorbed by the ground. It would, you know, not that much of it will go into the sewer system, significantly less. So we actually had a, it's called digital ortho photography. We had a plane fly through and using GIS and GPS information and our parcel data, they are able to determine what each parcel in the City of Oak Park, what their percentage or portion of impervious surface, impervious surface. And all that goes into a formula and it determines what the amount is that each property would be billed. So it's not based on usage at all. It's not based on how much it rains or anything like that. As far as what each property is going to be billed, it's divided off among the properties based on your pervious and impervious surface over the amount of land that you. And that's how that is all determined. Next slide here is, so the amount of rain during a storm is not immediately impacted stormwater charge, which is what I just kind of talked about. One of the things that I think is important to discuss is when streets flood, does that impact your stormwater? And the answer to that is no. So the streets in Oak Park have restricted catch basin covers. So what they, it slows down the water that goes into the system. Like I had mentioned, if all of the sewer, stormwater and sanitary are combined, so you want to slow the amount of stormwater that goes into the system so it doesn't overwhelm it. It doesn't, you know, back up and doesn't. So it's really regulated based on these restricted catch basin covers and what goes into the system and how fast. You know, I've heard people are nervous to clear the catch basin covers because they're worried about flooding. No, they're designed to hold back the water that they're holding back. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, if there's some leaves or some debris or litter on the street, it can slow, it can back that water up. So, you know, we send crews around every rainstorm from the Public Works Department and they clear out those catch basin covers. If you have one near you and it's flooding your street, I mean, you know, you could be of great help to our department and go out and remove that debris and it'll drain and, you know, keep the street dry and, you know, not cause that pounding on the street. But it will not hurt your system. Now, what I, we have actually had someone do is remove the catch basin covers and pull them off. That is a no-no. We don't want to do that. Not just for flooding, but because it also poses a hazard to cars or pedestrians. If you walk them by and, you know, you fell into those, you know, that's a big, you could really be injured or even worse. So we don't want you to do anything to them except clear them off if they're backing up. Next slide, please. Okay, we're on to customer service unless there's anything else for stormwater.
Okay. Kevin, I think this come back to me, I think. So, okay, a couple of things. Thank you, Kevin, very much. Couple of things I'll talk about with regards to customer service. A while back, we decided, council decided with our input to move to the monthly billing setup. And this was determined by the idea that it's easier for a household to budget on a monthly basis. Not only that, but if there were water leaks in a home, that monthly billing catches them, you know, much faster than quarterly billing because we're doing the reads on a more recent basis. As was mentioned, there is not a rate increase. And this includes that, you know, the Great Lakes Water Authority increased rates to us as the wholesale purchaser of water for our residents, and we did not pass that on. We also have reduced late fees from 10% to 5%. I think it's extremely important. I know, I was just talking about this the other day with a, with a group, but a lot of people don't realize the City of Oak Park has paid for and completed an entire citywide project for all of our residents to remove all private and public-led lines throughout the city. And I don't know about now, but I know fairly recently, we were the only urban city that I knew of that had actually done that. The state required a long-term plan to be submitted. And that was due this year. And prior to that plan being due, we had already completed the work. So we're way ahead of the game on there. So there aren't any lead lines in our city that we're aware of. We also still do allow the one late charge removal per calendar year for the ordinance. We all also are in the process for those who may be cramped because of COVID or other reasons, negotiating individual payment plans. And we do have a stormwater credit program that is still being analyzed in some ways for rain barrels, rain gardens, dry wells. And also a stormwater appeals process that our, one of our city vendors is currently structuring for us. Kevin Yi, I don't know, do we have an update on that that we can share? Or are we still in that process?
We are still in the process. We are meeting actually this week to go over the recommendations. And by the end of the month, I feel pretty confident that we should have something squared away as far as, as far as that goes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. So we're not in person, but Courtney, why don't we open it up to questions? And we're going to do our very best to answer each and every one. Again, our objective is to provide you as much information as we possibly can.
Okay. For those who are interested in asking a question, if you could please enter your name into the chat box and we'll call them as they appear on a first come basis. So I see someone has raised their hand. Just give me one second.
Courtney, I'm going to, while we're waiting for the questions, I do want to, I know the mayor had a question for me and I want to, I want to address it. I'm also going to talk about this at the regular council meeting too, by the way. But the question that the mayor was asking me to clarify was the solid waste charge on the utility bill. And let me speak to this. So you'll note that there is a $12.91, I believe, charge on your water bill. Or it's under rubbish collection. And so that is a standard charge that is charged, I believe, and Sondra and team, correct me if I'm wrong, on a monthly basis? $12.91 to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. And then on property taxes, you'll note that there's a 2.75 mil, Jamin, are you there? 2.75 mil charge for city solid waste. And a lot of people are wondering, why does this charge appear in two different places? And the simple answer to that is the 2.75 mils does not cover our total solid waste cost. So historically, we have charged for a fixed charge on the, on our utility bills. And that's not uncommon. Other communities do the same thing. Remember that as with all of our programs and things that we do, we are a not-for-profit. We are a government entity. So please do not feel like this is a markup or anything like that. This is simply to cover our solid waste charges. And also remember, we're a member of the SACRA consortium as well, hoping to get the best prices available to our, our solid waste customers. Okay, Courtney?
Yes, the first person we have is Dawn Purper.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. I just had a couple of questions. One was in regards to the cameras that go into the drains. How often is that monitored?
Dawn, can I, I'm going to have Kevin Yi answer your question. But before I have him answer, I just want to say good evening to you and thank you for your question.
Oh, you're welcome.
So it's not a camera that permanently goes into the sewer. So we clean the sewers and then we put a camera in there to assess them and do a, 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 basically, it's an assessment of the sewer system. So that happens every four years. So we do it annually. When the city broken up into four sections, so every four years, every sewer is cleaned and televised.
Okay, great. Because I did see a young man on my street and, you know, I see strangers in the neighborhood. I asked questions. And definitely that is exactly what he was doing. He says, oh, I'm checking for leaks in the water drain. So I didn't want to, you know, banbar him with the questions. I was just wondering what he was doing because he did have a device in his hand and he had an. and he had an object that was actually going into the drain without removing the manhole. So that's why I was wondering what that was. And the other question, the fiscal year you stated, what is the fiscal year? Is that like June to June, August, you know, what is the fiscal year?
Our, our fiscal year is July one to June thirty.
Okay. June thirtieth or June?
July one to June thirty, yep.
Okay, great. Last question, the cred, the credits on the, the barrels? You said that they were going to be meeting for, to go over some projections. Once you get that in, would you like post that or could I call that?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So, so I, I just want to say this too. So I, I want to clarify the stormwater charge appeals process that we're hoping to institute. We do not yet have the, the framework for that. So this is what Kevin Yi was mentioning, we're in the process of putting together. As far as the, the other credit programs regarding rain barrels, rain gardens, et cetera, you know, that's going to be on an annual basis where we look at those and say, is this properly meeting the needs of our community? Just like any other, you know, fee or whatever else that we do in the city, we will reevaluate those on an annual basis. So those are in place now for those, but it doesn't mean they couldn't change.
Okay. Alrighty, that was, oh, there's one more, I'm sorry. When, when, when the gentleman was describing the water bills, like, you know, from August, I only was able to jot down August sixteenth, but he gave her numbers like two oh, nine oh two and the nine seventy-two. Is that, what are those numbers?
Uh, yes, I can, I can go ahead. So what I was discussing, those were the, the rates that we charge per unit. That would be one cubic foot. So for water usage, it is four dollars and fifty-one cent. For sewer usage, it would be four dollars and eighty-six cents for one unit.
Thank you so much. Okay.
And just to clarify, it's actually one century cubic foot, so one hundred cubic feet, not, equals one unit.
Okay, one cubic feet.
One hundred cubic feet.
A one hundred cubic feet.
Yeah, so we bill per one hundred cubic feet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dawn.
Next we have Ken Sherman.
Um, hi. So my question is, when the water bill was at the two before it went to the one, my bill was fifty-two dollars. So when I got my bill the other day with the change, it went to forty-three dollars. So my question is, not to be the devil's advocate, with this change of a lower rate from the two to the one, prior to this, does that mean that we were overpaying for our water? I mean, how can you explain this change versus what it was before?
Well, I, I would, I'd have to have staff look at your specific example, Ken. Thank you for your question, by the way, and good evening. You know, I think obviously your usage determines that. I don't know why yours is off like that. We can follow up with you though. I know Kevin Bandywall, if you want to follow up with him after the fact and we can take a look at it just to see. But you, you mentioned something that I think is worth reiterating, which is the minimum uni, minimum unit bill, since the last town hall, has changed from two units to one. And this was another thing that, you know, city council felt very strongly about and, and I absolutely agree with. There's somewhere around, you know, eight hundred to a thousand customers who are in this minimum bill user group. So if you were using, you know, one unit of water before, you were being charged for two units. Well, now, if you're using one unit, you're going to be charged for one unit. So it is an advantage for those, for those users.
Yeah, I'm not complaining because my bill dropped from the previous billing, you know, to what it is now by about nine dollars. I just wondered, prior to all this change going into effect, you know, we're under the old system. Were we, you know, paying more money for our water rates somehow than we should have been paying if our rates are lower now versus before?
Well, Jamin, one sec. I think, I think I'll just say this and then Jamin, if you want to weigh in too. I, I think, you know, we feel comfortable with the rates that we've been charging, in my opinion, for what it's worth. I think if anything, we've been undercharging to some extent. Especially when you go back to the slides that Kevin Yi went through on our infrastructure needs. You know, we're definitely not meeting the infrastructure maintenance needs of the system adequately. So I think, especially this year where there's no increase at all, you know, we've, we've done this, city council has designed this so that, you know, we, we complimented people who might be recovering from COVID or in dire financial condition. Jamin, do you, I don't know if you want to add to that or not?
Thank you, city manager. What I would just add to that is, there are many different models of how to bill for water and sewer usage throughout the state and throughout the country in general. And one of the, the main ones being a fixed model, a, versus a variable model or a hybrid model. What that basically means is, and we currently have a hybrid model. So what that basically means is that when you're in a fixed model, it basically says that, well, you're part of the system, so you're going to pay a minimum amount of this no matter what. And, and usually that amount is called an infrastructure fee. And usually that amount is a, a large amount, usually thirty or forty dollars a month just in fees alone for being hooked up to the system. The city doesn't do that. We, we were based on a consumption model before. Obviously, there's, I talked about a hybrid model versus a fixed versus a variable. But the, the key here is that we're trying to, we've looked at lots of different cities and neighboring communities and looking at the models that they use, and we're trying to come up with a system and work with a system that allows people that are not using water to not have to pay as large of a portion of the system. Because their demand on the system isn't as great as it is people who are using thirty or forty units a month, let's say. And so that's the idea. So I would, and tagging on, or piggybacking on what city manager Tungay said, I don't think, I don't, saying that somebody was overpaying for water in the past, I don't think is, is realistic. Because as we've shown from our infrastructure demands or needs, the city, or the system itself has been underfunded because we have a system that needs massive repairs. And so if anything, we've been undercharging.
If my water consumption went from like nine to four, so that's where my bill went down the amount that it did, so.
You know, I think it's worth noting too, as you, everybody I think sees here in the chat, Dave DeFoster, our, our deputy DPW director, facilities director, one unit of water, I, I always am shocked by this, but one unit of water is the equivalent of seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. And I just, I'm always floored that, you know, when you think about somebody using a couple hundred units in a billing period, it's, it's just amazing. Okay, other questions, Courtney?
Next we have Charlie Cavell.
Yeah, hi. This is Charlie Cavell. I'm our county commissioner for part of Oak Park and a couple of other communities. And I just wanted a, a couple of like way-to-go team kind of things and then a comment. So the first one is, everyone on this call should be really proud that they either work for or live in Oak Park because as a county commissioner, I go to other communities around the county. And I'll tell you, Southfield's not having a water affordability town hall, Ferndale's not doing it. So like hats off to Oak Park leadership for like talking about this and being able to say, this is what it is. It's not perfect, but we're working on fixing it with all the tools we have in our toolbox. And way to be accountable to the people, awesome. Great public service stuff, Oak Park.
Thank you.
The second thing is, as you've all kind of been hearing, the city manager and other members of the administration say, Oak Park is kind of like the middle person, right? There's you, the end user, there's the City of Oak Park, and then there's these bigger water authorities. And so I want to give a quick FYI that Oakland County government is working on something to try and emulate, to be honest, what Oak Park has been able to do to squeeze water out of rocks to make lead lines go away, but then also working on how to make water more affordable structurally. But it's this huge mega thing. But if you have questions about that or would like to know the like Oak Park up, right? So Oak Park's like the ten thousand foot level, if you want to see the thirty thousand foot level. This Thursday, join the East Oak Park Neighborhood Association because I'll be there as our county commissioner and bringing on the folks that run the Water Resources Commission for Oakland County, which is, you know, a way to get water to people throughout all of Oakland County. So they'll kind of be able to give the thirty thousand foot level and bring it back down to the Oak Park level as well. If you have more questions or want to talk more about structurally about what it means to have to pay for sixty-eight miles of new water pipes. And I can share that information with anyone that wants it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your support. Courtney?
Next we have Crystal Bailey.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Courtney, for the opportunity to speak and the rest of the administration. I am Crystal Bailey, resident of Oak Park as well as a candidate for mayor of Oak Park. And I had a question about the appeals process for the stormwater runoff. How long do we expect before their language is developed?
Thank you, Crystal. And, and Kevin, I don't know, were you able to hear that question? But I, could you take that one, please, in terms of the timing of that appeals process?
Um, yes, absolutely. We, we're working it out. We have a meeting set for this week to go over where we're at with the appeals process. And.
Kevin?
I'm sorry, I was, I looked like I was unmuted. I, I'm sorry. We are going to be meeting this week to kind of hopefully finalize some details on that process. And I fully expect by the end of the month, we should have an, an outline for how the appeals process is going to work for that. Appeals process is going to be based on appealing the, you know, not necessarily how much stormwater leaves a property as much as, you know, if there's a discrepancy in the amount of land that you own or if there's a discrepancy in how much pervious and impervious surface is, is on your property or if that stormwater does something different than what you would expect or what we know. We expect to have something more solidified by the end of the month.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay.
Next we have Steve Gold.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Um, I monitor the Oak Park Neighbors Group on Facebook and Facebook is not the official Oak Park City Hall. But recently, there was a case where somebody had reported forty units of water usage, which is like thirty thousand gallons in one month. And they swore they didn't have any leaks. And, and recently, somebody now says they have twenty units, which is fifteen thousand gallons and swear they don't have any leaks. With a forty thousand gallon person, I explained to them how they could look at their meter and test to see whether they had leaks. They did and they found out that they had a broken toilet in the basement and that the cause was legitimate. I'm wondering if Kevin, if you could possibly mention the way that you can look at, a resident can look at their water meter and detect if you're using water when they don't think they are.
Kevin, please feel free to answer that. And I think also if you could talk about some of the things that we do when situations like that arise as well.
Uh, yeah, sure, no problem. So one of the things you can do inside your household is, is if you want to know if something's using water, you know, there's pipes underground, we don't know where water's going, how do, how do we know something's leaking, right? So we all want to know that answer. So the best thing and advice I can give everyone is to check their water meter out. If you have a basement, it's located in your basement somewhere near a utility room. If you're on a slab, it's somewhere where your furnace is, hot water tank is. Our water meters have a leak dial on it. It's a small red triangle. And so that's a great thing to look at because leaks underground are hard to detect, right? Irrigation systems, we don't know if we have something leaking. Toilets, ninety percent of the time, high water bills are called, are, are the result of something unforeseen, such as a toilet in the basement running. So by looking at this meter and the leak dial, this is going to detect that much sooner and quicker. And you can see what's going on. Okay, I have something leaking somewhere. I need to find out where it's at. So if we have water off in the whole house and outside garden spigots, the leak dial on the water meter should not be spinning at all. If you see the leak dial spinning or twitching or moving slowly, and it's a smart meter, it's going to detect every single drop. If you have a faucet that's dripping, it's going to de- detect that. So if we see that spinning, then we got a probable cause somewhere. So that's one of the best ways that you can tell if something's leaking inside or outside your home, is visit your water meter. If, if anyone needs help to locate their water meter, don't, you know, feel, feel free to give our office a call. Don't hesitate and we can walk you through the process. If we're uncomfortable with that and we don't know where our meter is, we need some help, we don't go in our basement, I can't go down the steps, feel free to give us a call. We do have in-home appointments. It's a courtesy of the city. There's no charge. We send a field technician out to the property. We verify the, the reading on the meter. We'll take a look at the, the leak dial, see if we see it spinning. And we do what we call in-home walkthrough. So we'll look at things like your toilets, your faucets, even your humidifiers, you know, those go unforeseen, they use water. So we, we, we're not licensed plumbers, but we're very experienced in what, you know, our guys do out in the field, so they know what to look for. Another key thing here is, oh, perfect. So your meter up here is, it's a Neptune meter. This is exactly what is inside of all our residential properties and commercial properties. This is a Neptune model, which is our, our meter style. So if we look at the meter here, you see the, the big clock dial, but what we want to look for is this little tiny triangle, which I was talking about, that red triangle. So if we see anything spinning like we see on the screen right here, that means we have water, you know, going through that meter inside the property. So, you know, make sure we got all the faucets turned off, make sure, you know, no one's in the shower or, or the toilet hasn't been flushed. So if we're for sure nothing is being used inside the property like water or the sprinkler system, take a look at it. You see something like this on the screen, that's a probable cause that something is leaking, especially if we know that nobody's using water. So like again, just give us a call. We know, we'll come out, we'll inspect that for you. There's going to be no charge. We, we bill a lot sooner now. This is one of our, our greatest things with the monthly billing versus quarterly. We'll be able to detect those leaks sooner than later. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you so much for the explanation. The, the other thing that people can do for their toilets, a lot of times, a simple test is to take some food coloring and put a couple drops of food coloring in the tank, the toilet tank, not the bowl, the toilet tank. And then just don't use the toilet for a while. And if you end up with the, seeing color in the food, in the toilet bowl, that means that the toilet is leaking. Not a severe leak, but usually the flapper valve needs replacing or, or something like that. But the woman that asked me about the forty units, when I told her about the little triangle leak detector, she then posted a video on Facebook and it looked like it was attached to an electric motor. It was spinning so fast, you couldn't believe it. And she said, well, I guess that's it. So anyways, thank you very much for passing on that information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Steve.
Right.
Okay, Courtney, other questions?
We did not have any additional names in the chat box, but we did have somebody ask basically just a reexplanation of the current stormwater fee versus what the city had before the court order.
Well, I'll just say, very generally speaking, and then I, I may have our assistant city manager, Kevin Yi, speak in more specific terms. But generally speaking, we didn't have the stormwater fee before. So we paid for this charge out of our, our rates before. So, you know, we were, the city was a party to a, to a lawsuit that was settled that has resulted in this stormwater charge becoming part of the utility bill. So this did not exist prior to that and, you know, we were the defendant in a, in a lawsuit.
Now, I only want to add is that, you know, we were, we were still paying the stormwater bill. It was just being charged differently. So the, you know, the, the charge was still there. This is not a new, brand new charge that was, you know, no one was ever paying for before. We were always paying it. Now it just had to be broken out into this separate charge. So it was always there. We just had to break it out into a separate charge and that's what happened.
I think it's important to remember that not only that, and, and Kevin, that's an excellent point. Not only that, we were required to break it out as a separate charge, we were also then required to put a systematic way of determining that charge in place. And Kevin talked a little bit earlier about, you know, the drone, um, view of the city in terms of estimating the size of the impervious, impervious surface areas and land sizes and things. Um, that's not uncommon. Many other cities around us did the exact same thing. Um, so we were also forced to do that. And again, this is a charge that was part of a larger, um, you know, rate charge before. So this is a new charge that appears. Okay, anything else, Courtney, that you see?
That's all we have for now.
Okay. Um, uh, Kevin Vandywall, anything else you want to add?
Nothing else to add. Thank you, Eric.
Okay. Sondra, Director Sondra Crawford, anything you want to add? Or Steve? Okay. Assistant City Manager Ye?
I think we covered it all. Thank you.
Deputy Director Jamin Winters, you, go ahead, Jamin.
Yeah, one other thing I would add to, just to piggyback on the stormwater, um, when we did cha- when the city changed to the, to the current model for stormwater runoff billing, um, at that same time, the sanitary sewer rates were cut in half. So it's, it's, again, it's not a, it's not a new fee. Um, it was just previously you were be- being charged significantly more for sanitary sewer. Um, and that number again was cut in half. That, that per unit rate was cut in half when we changed to the current model for sanitary sewer, or for stormwater runoff. How's that?
Absolutely. Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for their attention. Um, we're gonna, um, wait to see if we're gonna have more of these, obviously, but I want to thank our residents for their support and, um, we'll see you all coming up here at seven o'clock at our city council meeting. Have a good evening. Thank you.